This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask President Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather here once again. Father, we thank you for all those in attendance. Father, we thank you for all of the good works that stand before us, Father. And we thank you also for the opportunities. Father, we know that every opportunity presents an opportunity for you to shine, Father. And we thank you for this day. We thank you for covering this great city, Father God, and blessing it with great leaders, Father. Please continue to touch and heal this city, Father God, and grow our wisdom, Father God, that we may make progress and be a city that you can be proud of, Father. For it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and City Council meeting held on August 11th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of August 7th through August 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor.
I'd like to ask Carol Scott to come up, please. For as ovarian and gynologic cancers are among the leading cancer killers of women in the United States, and more than 98,000 women will be diagnosed and more than 30,000 women will die from these diseases this year. The good health and well-being of women in our city and state are enhanced by increased awareness about ovarian and gynologic cancers and their symptoms and treatments. It is critical for women, physicians, and all healthcare providers to recognize the risk factors and symptoms of ovarian and gynologic cancers and to remember the importance of early detection in preventing and treating these diseases. Continued progress in the battle against ovarian and gynologic cancers requires increased awareness and education, and all educators, service providers, researchers, and advocacy groups are urged to work together to inform more women about ovarian and gynologic cancers and to educate women in Gadsden and the state of Alabama about screening services. It is also crucial that all women in Gadsden and the state of Alabama take an active role in learning the symptoms and risk factors associated with ovarian and gynologic cancers, developing health habits, and undergoing regular medical exams so any occurrence of these diseases may be detected in their early and treatable stages. Therefore, I, Strom and Gattin, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, do hereby proclaim September 2015 as Ovarian and Gynologic Cancer Awareness Month throughout the city and encourage all residents of Gadsden to work together to raise awareness of ovarian and gynologic cancer and do commend this observance to all our citizens.
Awareness of ovarian cancer is very, very important because it's so often diagnosed in the late stages. On August 18th, 2008, I was diagnosed with ovarian cancer, and I was one of the ones that was blessed with a stage-two diagnosis, and so my outlook is good. It's been seven years and I have not had a recurrence. And so, this is very, very crucial, and everybody knows a woman, so make sure they know the symptoms and know their body and get help. Thank you so much for doing this.
You can't beat having checkups. I know a lot of people who've had issues. I did when I was 27. My dad passed away, and the doctor back then, we didn't have a heart doctor here, Dr. Scott Vance, said, "We need to check you," saying, "For heart disease is hereditary." I was in excellent condition, played all kinds of sports, my cholesterol triglycerides were about 1,000. So I had to change my whole way of eating and all that, and that really is what's got me walking today. If he hadn't told me, I'd have never made it out of my 40s, my doctor said.
Thank you, Mayor. We really appreciate that. Unfinished business, we have none today. This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 204 East Broad Street in District 2, the state of Alabama, John Wiggins, and/or the estate of Harold Watson, Sr., being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Mr. President, and ladies and gentlemen of the Council, I want to give a little brief history. I'm here on behalf of John Wiggins, who is my father-in-law. This piece of property particularly located in East Gadsden, it was deeded to Mr. Harold Watson originally in 2008. The deed was delivered to Mr. Watson at that point in time, and for some reason was never recorded when this came to our attention. And it only came to our attention due to someone, his granddaughter, who had his power of attorney, came to the office and said, "We've lost the deed." Mr. Wiggins executed another deed, delivered to her, I believe, in February of this year, and it hasn't been recorded. We checked yesterday. So, we're just in a situation where the property, we take the position the property's Mr. Watson's and, well, or his estate's property, and that in the event there's any nuisance abatement or anything has to be done, that any assessments be assessed to Mr. Watson's estate.
All right. Name and address?
John Floyd, 808 Chestnut Street, Gadsden, Alabama.
Well, all the assessments are put as a lien on the property, and we just make sure that we notify any potential owners or people we thought might have an interest in the property to let them know. So yes, we will not be seeking any type of reimbursement from your father-in-law. It will be posted as a lien on the property.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case involving commercial property in 200 block of East Broad in June of 2014. There have been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the Council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 608 Tidmore Bend Road in District 2, Billy and Donna Watkins being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in July of 2013. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the Council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 225 Yale Avenue in District 2, the estate of Francis Pruitt, Scott Loring, and Tony Pruitt being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in April 2014. There have been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out in August of last year. No improvements have been made on that permit. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What's the pleasure of the Council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 515 Abercrombie Street in District 3, the state of Alabama, and the estate of Ruth Quarles being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started our case in October of 2013. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the Council?
I move to abate.
Sorry, move to abate. Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1404 Hill Avenue in District 3, Nathan L. Carter and LVK Carter being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in January of 2014. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the Council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
On discussion, I understand that he wants to convey the property to the city, but we're gonna go ahead on and abate, and then if, so if we have any problems with the paperwork, we'll still have this avenue.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstain.
I'm sorry, we have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1427 Summit Drive in District 3, the state of Alabama, and Richard Pollant being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started our case in December of 2013. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the Council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1613 Cooper Street in District 5, the state of Alabama, Billy R. Brown and James F. Johnson being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a house and a tree. We started it in November 2013. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What's the pleasure of the Council?
I move to abate.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisances on property located at 1313 Tuscaloosa Avenue in District 3, Ronnie Pollard being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in December of last year. There have been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out in January of this year. No improvements on that permit. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the Council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, like I mentioned upstairs, we are abating a lot of properties and knocking and tearing down these houses. At some point, we're gonna have to figure out a way of rebuilding some homes, getting investors in here, or something. Because after a while, we're not gonna have any homes in Gadsden, at this rate.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Items number 17 through 20 are also public hearings. These are public hearings, resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for demolition that has already been performed, and we have four locations. I'm gonna read the addresses and names, and anyone who wishes to speak about any of these may come forward. 919 Spruce Street in District 5. The amount is $3,439.92. State of Alabama, Kim Parker, doing business as The Parker Company. 307 Bryan Street in District 6. The lien amount is $2,676.79. State of Alabama, Chad W. Clifton, and Bank of North Georgia. 3013 Topeka Street, it's in District 6. The lien amount is $1,889.92. State of Alabama and Ruth Freights. And the last one is 124 West Cow Place in District 7. State of Alabama and Shirley Ruth Meadows, Preston. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all four resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all four resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all four.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to add bed and breakfast facilities. In response to requests from interested persons who wish to purchase property near the downtown area, the planning department has requested this amendment to the zoning ordinance. It would establish guidelines and operating parameters for bed and breakfast establishments, such as size of guest rooms, number of bathrooms, off-street parking spaces, signs, food services, et cetera. Parties or events would not be allowed. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the Council will vote on it next week. Our next and final public hearing is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to permit bed and breakfast facilities. This relates to the previous ordinance and adds bed and breakfast to the chart of permitted uses. The planning commission unanimously recommended the Council approve the ordinance. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? This ordinance also has been presented today for first reading, and the Council will vote on it next week. Item number 23 is a resolution awarding bid number 3295 for tow and recovery services. The purchasing department has recommended awarding the bid to Hair/Wrecker Service, and the totals are $180 for lightweight equipment and $740.71 for heavy equipment. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, what this basically is, just we're getting on. Somebody to holler on equipment like our police cars break down. We've got a good rate on all our vehicles that's being towed by this company. They turned in the bid, and hopefully we'll save some money this year of what we paid out last year.
Is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 24 is a resolution authorizing lease agreement with Pitney Bowls for postage meters. This is for four postage meter machines located in City Hall, the Revenue Department, Parks and Recreation, and the Library, and the amount is $875.71 per month to be paid quarterly. The term begins October 1st, 2015, and expires September 30th, 2016, which is renewable for a maximum rental period of 60 months. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 25 is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Greater Gadsden Housing Authority. This continues the community policing program in the seven public housing facilities for the next fiscal year. Under this agreement, the Housing Authority will reimburse the city for the hourly salary excluding benefits of five officers. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item number 26 is a resolution authorizing agreement with the American Red Cross. This is for the use of Elliott Community Center for temporary emergency shelter. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
That's not pertaining to this. Mayor, I'm just gonna ask you, Mayor, if we ever, if Mr. Gaither ever got with the rescue squad about using their building for this too? I know. I know that was deemed at one time a shelter down there, and that'd be another one for over in there if we could get it. Okay, I was just curious about that.
Okay, is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, new business? Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two items. My first item has a request from Parks and Recreation Department, and this is where they're asking for an agreement, authorizing an agreement with the clinical urology associates, PC to sponsor fishing tournament, and this is a cast for a cure, and this will be on September the 5th, and the budget for this is $500. We'd be a sponsor. I ask for unanimous consent.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I ask for adoption.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I have another item that's appointment of members to the beautification board. I'm asking for unanimous consent for it to be brought up today. This is where we have, this is the beautification board, new appointees, Jesse Rawl that lives on Peyton Road, Fay Parker that lives at Tomahawk Trail, and Kate Pew that lives at Rainbow Drive Number 8, along with Martha Elrod, Kitty Pay, Pat Sherman, Barbara Taylor, and Florence Dow to the beautification board.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Okay, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. This, I ask for unanimous consent to consider a resolution awarding bid number 3286 to Bob Smith Construction Company for the construction of the Couche Riverfront Park Development Project.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
The amount is like $2,400,000. This money has been put back from three re, uh, what is this? The bond issues where we save money by refunding them, 800,000 on one, 600,000 on another one, 600,000 on another one, and that like 312,000 being enough, so that's coming out of the TIF funds, which is... And since there may be some changes in that, that may not be all it's gonna be, but anyway, that's the way it's gonna be funded. It's not coming out of the... It's not coming out of the unfunded balance. So I ask for the vote.
Second.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a, ask for unanimous consent to hear a resolution authorizing agreement between the City of Gaston, S and M E, and USAC and Alabama Power, FERC, requiring permitting on the Couche Riverfront project.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Ask for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is, uh, budgeted for $11,300, and this has to do with the new park that's gonna be across the river there. And I think in pre-council, everybody got to see what it was gonna be, and I think it'll be a great asset for the City of Gaston.
We're finally getting a riverfront.
Right.
Maybe with some lights and something you can mark on, but something that will attract people to Gaston, but we have a beautiful waterway there, and it just needs to be developed. I think this is a good thing for the city.
All right, is there any more discussion? I would ask that Heath, before you give that, that picture to the, to the, to the Times that we doctor it up a little bit so that water will look blue, it's still, it's a little greenish-brown, we need to, we need to doctor that picture up some. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. It's legal document 2015 slash 354. It's a resolution authorizing application and acceptance of Alabama Recycle Fund Grant Agreement in amount of $104,692. I'd ask for unanimous consent, please.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
Yes, Hal Matthews does a good job writing these grants for us. We're gonna buy, we're gonna try to get a baler for our recycling center, a forklift clamp, to go attachments going in, and we're also gonna pour a access ramp and put safety rails in there where everybody be safe when they're in there. I think we've got a couple of these before, and we need to get all these grants while we can, 'cause one day they're gonna be gone.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Cannon, for recognizing Howell. He does do a very good job of securing this grant money for us, so there's some work that goes into that application process. Okay, is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I have two, Mr. President. Ask unanimous consent on resolution authorizing agreement with the Gaston Water Works for utility relocation on the Tuscaloosa Avenue over Black Creek for the Tuscaloosa Avenue Bridge Replacement Project.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, is there any more discussion?
Uh, this was, the budget item is for $22,826.28. And hopefully we'll go ahead and get this work started.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I have one more, Mr. President. This is a resolution authorizing agreement with Sears for the Fire Department and the Police Department to perform an active shooter exercise on August the 23rd, 2015, at the Sears property located at 1001 Rainbow Drive.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion? There's no discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Mr. President, I have one. It's a resolution awarding bid number 3294 to Bob Smith Construction, Inc., for the repairs and alterations to Gillland Reis Covered Bridge at Knocklou Falls Park. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Okay, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion?
I hear again, this is a, just a good way of preserving Gaston history, is what it's about.
Okay, is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards. Okay, remarks by the mayor and council. Councilman Reed, would you like to start?
Yeah, I think the biggest thing that's happened all day is it's Avi Nelson's birthday. So I think everybody should clap and wish her a happy birthday. And she did pay me to sing. That's all I have.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you. Av, I do wish you a happy birthday, and I think one time somebody came in here singing it a few years back, "Happy Birthday." I say that, uh, today we've got a mayor, Larry Means, in the audience. I want to appreciate you for coming today, Larry, and I want to tell you, the people of Tallah are really lucky to have you to be there, mayor, over there. And I still wish you was down in Montgomery, 'cause I for one really miss you right now. And I appreciate all the work you did down there for us. That's all I got.
Okay, Councilman Billingsley?
I'd like to also echo that for Mayor Means, because I've known him a long time, and he's gone through a lot of things for the citizens of Etowah County and of Tallah. And I just want to thank you for all the things that you've done in the past. Thank you.
Councilman Worthy?
Uh, yes, sir. I would like to just say I appreciate the new principal at Gaston City High. Uh, he invited us out to speak to the junior class and the sophomore class on Thursday. Uh, the mayor, myself, and Councilman Billy Billingsley went out and we spoke to him about the career path. So, uh, I know you hear a lot of prob, uh, stories, negative stuff about the school, but we would like to expand on the positive stuff of Gaston City School System. So, uh, we talked to him about the career tech with all the jobs that we have here in Gaston and within a fifty mile radius of Gaston, so our kids just won't graduate, then go off to college, and, uh, think that there's no jobs here in Gaston for them to come back to, because that's, that's what everybody do. So, uh, we just want to say thank you to him, and we'll be working closely with him on the career tech side of things. And I was gonna talk to you about something else, but I'm gonna just let the mayor talk today, and then I'll say what I have to say later. Thank you.
All right. Now, I want to echo that. Our kids do, do a great job, so at every turn, let's make sure we encourage those young people, 'cause they do work hard. What's your calls?
Uh, Pastor Miss Stone. District One meeting, August the 24th, 6:00 PM, at the Family Life Center. Uh, the other thing I'd like to talk about is, is safety. I know the city spent a lot of money for the crosswalk over in East Gaston, coming from the elementary school, uh, to cross over Megan Boulevard, and you have children that are still crossing the street instead of using the walkway. First thing I did was asked the chief, could we give the parents a ticket, and of course he said no. But, um, safety is very, very important, and so we need to make sure that, that crosswalk is used. And I also like to, uh, thank Councilman Reed. He and I was playing musical instruments yesterday. We took a lot of instruments to Litchfield. They have eighty students, uh, in a music class, and so we took guitars, we took flutes, violin, and even took an amp for, uh, bass guitar. So I just appreciate Councilman Reed, and let's encourage our children.
I guess you've noticed lately, it's been in the news about the jail, and, uh, you know, we've been given an ultimatum, it sounds like what I read, but I just want to tell you a few things that's happened in the past few years. You know, great things can be accomplished when all the communities and the governments work together, but when you have people who don't want to cooperate, uh, it's hard to get anything done. That's sort of what's wrong in Washington and Montgomery, too. Rainbow City and Gaston worked together on the Keystone Food Project and Southern Coal Storage. All total is probably around $130 million in that project, which saved about 500 jobs and added new jobs for the area. Part of this project was including four-lining airport road, which benefits all of Etowah County. Gaston works with the MPO to build Black Creek Parkway at a cost of more than eight million, which was really a county project. If not, they would've had to replace the bridge on Sutton Bridge Road, which was declared unsafe. The city contributed almost $250,000. The county paid almost nothing. The City of Gaston helped because we knew it would improve traffic situation on Rainbow Drive, and it would help overall traffic flow for everybody. Gaston sponsored the DHR, Department of Human Resource Project, at a cost of about eight million, with no help from the county. This is usually a county project, in most counties. The city's portion was about $450,000. Gaston also paid upfront costs of over $490,000 to build a new Etowah County Health Department. It took us about three years, which was half the cost, it took us about three years to get, uh, the money back. These, that was usually a county project in most places. Gaston installed a new communication tower to price of $3 million. We paid $600,000 a year, I mean, yeah, $600,000 a year for five years to pay that off, with no help from anyone. And what that enabled us to do, the police used to with the radios, they had to go to dispatch, and to the other dispatch, and to the officer maybe in Glencoe or Atala, and then back like that. And all the rest of the municipalities and the county had to do was buy the radios. And, you know, I'm glad we could do that, that makes it safer for everybody, and the council felt the same way. Gaston worked with the state to help secure $1.5 million for the new automotive technology center and upgrades to the Bevel Center at Gaston State. Gaston continues to work with Gaston State and the Gaston City Schools through the Workforce Development Partnership. Gaston funds the Industrial Development Authority at approximately $425,000 a year, and the Northeast Alabama Regional Airport at about $280,000, which benefits all of Etowah County. Through the MPO, Gaston works with Etowah County and all the cities in the county to fairly distribute one and a half million dollars annually for roads and bridges. Gaston provides funding for the Drug Task Force with five employees. We work with all the law enforcement agents in the area to make sure Gaston and everybody is kept safer, all of Etowah County. After all of this, we have now been told, if we don't pay for a guaranteed number of beds per day in the county jail, many of which are not used, we will be kicked out by the end of September. The county leaves Gaston, City of Gaston, no choice but to look for other partners or to build a jail, which will be an unnecessary duplication of services in this county. The citizens of Gaston and Etowah County deserve better treatment and accountability for their tax dollars. Gaston will continue to look for ways to work with local governments, but we will not be bullied into a bad deal. It is not Gaston's responsibility to balance the county budget. It is hurting from bad investments in security needs. We know their budget is tight because they jumped too soon to buy the bingo property, which never came. With problems such as wetlands, possible environmental issues, no road, no access from I-59, and no power grid, it looks to me like they probably made a really bad investment. It has been estimated it would take approximately $21 million plus to get this ready for a mega site. They keep spending money on a pig and a poke, just to put it plain, which I hear may have been leased for deer hunting. According to the Gaston Times, they have spent approximately $2.4 million and are now spending another $900,000 for a gravel road. Just because they end up with a site that's a mega site does not guarantee they will get one. Most of the time, uh, those locations go to larger cities with more money, more voters, and a local delegation who knows how to work with both sides to bring projects on. I think it's really a shame that the only changing, that they are only charging the federal government $45 per day for housing illegal INS prisoners, while we have to pay $60 per day and guarantee 40 beds. On top of that, we're down to using only about 15 beds per day, so that's 25 empty beds that we would have to continue to pay for. Simply put, the county is trying to balance their budget on our backs, so we are forced to look at other options. I'm sure the taxpayers of Gaston would not want us spending $60 per day on 25 beds a day that we don't use. We have done a lot of projects we didn't have to do and spent money on projects and helped other municipalities, as well as county projects, but only in Gaston, not only in Gaston, all of Etowah County, anything that happens in Gaston, Etowah County, or any other municipality, helps all of us. But a lack of cooperation holds back progress. In closing, the City of Gaston is not gonna pay $900,000 a year for beds we don't use. It's just not gonna happen. We have paid for many projects that helps everyone, and I think it's sad we can't get a fair compromise. I understand the county commission is at a conference at the beach. I wonder what that costs? I'm also sure that Commissioner Statham is practicing drawing lines in the sand. It may cost him about $900,000 to affect his budget when he gets back.
Thank you, mayor, and amen. 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 We, uh, we all know that, that jail agreement is a bad deal. It's a bad agreement, and, um, it's one thing for us to be in a bad agreement, it's another thing for us to, to have someone pound their chest and say, "You're gonna get back in it again." These are, these are very, it's very unfortunate for someone to negotiate in that manner. It really is, and it, and I, and again, what they have done essentially is put themselves in a position to where now, on top of absorbing the loss of the one cent sales tax, which equates to about $300,000, I think, um, also with the security expense that they're gonna have to take on, because it's, it's gaining momentum, um, they're also now gonna have to consider almost a $900,000 hit to their budget. I'd really like to see them explain that to their voters and their citizens.
I did want to mention one other thing we appreciate, Senator Means, Mayor of Tallah, being here. He always brags on me, and I always brag on him, and the reason is, we've been buddies about forty years, and we know so much bad stuff on each other, we don't dare say nothing bad.
And he's got the microphone today, right? But, uh, but indeed, and I, and I want to be fair. Sheriff Todd Intrikin came and spoke to us during the pre-council meeting today, and I want to be fair, and I want to be clear about something. Commissioner Carolyn Parker and Sheriff Todd Intrikin and his office, they have extended the olive branch, and historically, they have partnered with the city on a number of different projects. But there are many over there who have not done so, and there are many who, for some reason, feel that the incorporated areas of the county aren't necessarily their responsibility. And I have a, a personal opinion that I'll keep to myself as to why they feel that way, but I feel very strongly about what I, what I feel as it relates to why they don't like to address the incorporated areas. But again, I thank the mayor for the points that he's, that he's, that he's laid out. It's all facts, and it's all data, and it's all true.
Well, can I say something on that end? Listen, uh, you, you all know my feelings. I think we should have our own jail, and we should build our own jail, and we could save money. I was on the phone this morning with the people that built the Boaz Jail. I, I really want a brick and mortar building, but we could do the igloos. I don't want to, but I guess we at that point. But we could do that for, uh, $700,000, and we could take that money out of the Undesignated Fund and pay it back. And they also would give us out of that $700,000, $25,000
And they also would give us out of that seven hundred thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars back for site prep. Back in two thousand and six, when we, uh, did the feasibility study, Chief Nick, before he retired from the police department, it would've cost us five hundred and eighty-five thousand back then. So today, it's only seven hundred thousand, really less than that. So we need to really look at that, and that way, we won't have to worry about people going up on us, because if, uh, no matter where we go, if we don't use the county, if we go to, uh, anywhere, yeah, they gonna bring us in at a cheap rate, but over time, it's gonna go up. When they see that we are cash cow, and that's what the county's looking at, help balancing their budget, so we really need to think about that.
Thank you, Councilman Worthy. Again, as, before we move on to better and brighter things, I will say that I'm gonna be a hard sell to spend more money with them as it relates to this jail agreement. I'm gonna be a very difficult sell. Do want to recognize again, my, my friend as well, Larry Means, we appreciate you taking time to come, come visit with us, and, uh, we definitely appreciate you, and we do, we miss, we miss your service, and, uh, you know, we, uh, but we're glad to have you just down the road as well, so that's important. I want to recognize in the back corner there, Officer Shockley. Raise your hand, Officer Shock, uh, Lieutenant, Lieutenant Shockley. Lieutenant Shockley, um, you know, you know, we, there, you know, police officers have a very difficult job on the street, but a lot of people miss the fact that they also have a difficult job off the street. Uh, the chief requires that they attend all of our district meetings, and I had a district meeting a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, and I'm fortunate, and my, my folks are pretty civil, uh, when we have our district meetings, uh, and, uh, and they, they tend to be pretty well attended. Uh, but what was interesting is, uh, you know, in this, in this era, in this, in this day and age, the police officers take a lot of heat from the, from the community, and I want to commend him on how he handled himself. Not everybody can stand there and, uh, and respond, uh, at a respectful level the way that he did. So I really, he didn't see this coming, so I apologize if I'm embarrassing you, but he handled himself very well, and I, and I do appreciate that. It's one of the reasons why everybody can't be a police officer, and it's also one of the reasons why everybody can't be an elected official, uh, because everybody doesn't have the sense to keep their mouth shut sometimes. And, uh, and again, I thought, I think he was very, very respectful, uh, in how he managed it, and he didn't have answers for everything, uh, but, uh, but he was, he respectfully responded to people and, uh, and their concerns, and he walked away, uh, with a list of items to address, so, so I do appreciate that. And, uh, and lastly, I want to likewise wish happy birthday to the City Clerk's clerk, and that's Ivana. That's Ivana. We, uh, we really appreciate her. All right. Yeah, 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 we, yeah, likewise, we have two of our former council members here that I like to recognize. We have, uh, Councilman Harris, who's, uh, who's here occasionally, uh, and, uh, we also have Bill Stewart here, so we appreciate, uh, appreciate seeing them here. Okay, is there, is there anything else? Entertain a motion that we adjourn.